Thirty and called meeting the board. We have the citizens.
No, sir, we do not.
Entertained emotional adoption of the agenda.
Motion to adopt with one exception moving. From by the. First hour board into the executive.
All right, you got a motion by Mr. Smith.
Second.
A second by Dr. Randy, all those in favor. She carries.
Motion to approve problems four and five.
Got a motion by. A second by Dr. Randy, all those in favor. All right, item number six, items of information about departments, governance and operations. Got two items here first is next year's organizational changes.
Yeah, just board, I wouldn't remind you that over the last few months, we've had people who retired. We've had people who've been shifted into different places and I just wanted to. Just remind you just some of the changes that are taking place within our organization. Ms. Priscilla Collins is now our deputy superintendent. Ms. Kathy Tefal is sliding into a chief finance officer role. Ms. Donna Allen is sliding into a new student affairs role. Lynn Jones is sliding over into HR manager. And then George Griffin has joined us as director of marketing communications and PR. So we've had a lot of changes over the last few months. We just kind of wanted to remind you that as we go into July, that we have had some changes and just wanted to. Just let you know, everybody's been doing a fantastic job. Had a number of people who've retired. It's sad to see them go, but it's also a great time for people to have new opportunities. Just want to bring that in your attention.
Would you be presenting a new?
I can reshare that.
Thank you for asking.
Yeah, I think the last time I was sent was probably back in April. But they're intense to what they didn't get to. Also, an item on here, Ms. Sherry has been doing a fantastic job the last couple of years of federal programs. And we're bringing for you not just to share with you the American Rescue Plan Act. In our plan as a school system. So as a school system, you will find this for us here. Our full plan, you're more than welcome to read the entire plan, which has quite a few pages. But it's located on our FY twenty-two budget milliliterate page as well, and it's kind of here at the bottom. And so as a school system, we're receiving just under twenty million dollars as a part of the American Rescue Plan Act. And how we use those funds, we do have to provide. The plan to the public, we do have to receive feedback from that plan. And then also submit it to the state for their approval in order to use those funds. A minimum of twenty percent has to be used on learning loss. You will see that we are about twenty-seven percent on learning loss. And so just what I wanted to share with you is on our, on our plan. It is hyperlinked at the top that has our full plan that we submit and will be submitted to the state later this week or next week. And if you want to look at all of those pages, you're more than welcome to do so. I prefer to not make people sick that are doing this online as I scroll through that documents. But overall, you can see twenty-seven percent of the funds are really related to summer learning loss and supplemental after school plans. One percent, two hundred and ten thousand is about tracking student attendance and improving engagement. And distance education, that is, there are a panorama product that we currently use. We'll be, we'll be able to pay for that out of these funds. And also as we get into CTAE, being able to. Help grow some of the opportunities when it comes to the Perkins funds. And how we will use CTAE funds as well as with students with disabilities, as well as in their. At risk populations, more information coming out about that. But some of that is detailed in the plan. Mental health services, two and a half million to the two to twelve point seven percent. And then also some technological purchases for our students as well. Of course, that may be a few years from now, being able to replace the Chromebooks that we were able to use cares one funds with. So I just encourage you to take time if you want to look through the full document you can. We felt like this snapshot, which is what we have to provide to the state as well. That gives you a good overview of how the funds are spent or planning to be spent. We were only receiving about two thirds of these funds upfront. Once the plan is approved, we anticipate receiving the final third. That we have through September of twenty twenty-four to use these funds. So we do have, for example, a summer school program that we're finishing up this week. We have that in this budget for the next four summers, this one included. And so we're trying to project out for the next four years after school activities, summer school opportunities, mental health opportunities. So a lot of it, we don't have details on necessarily because we don't know how the needs will shift over the next year or two. But overall, you can see how the funds are planned to be used up for the mission. So both the link is on that webpage where our budget is located, as well as the feedback form, any feedback on the. Any questions from the board?
Is this, is this the same as the cares?
Yes, this is the third iteration of it. So we've really had cares one and two, which are all under ESSER. So this is the new administration, new name, so American Rescue Plan.
Any other questions? All right, next item on the agenda, Mrs. Allen, who will be reading a given us a first reading of policy AC. Governing the school district organization plan. Evening, Mrs. Allen.
Good evening to the board. I just want to say thanks to our Congressman sponsors. State House Representative Matt Dubnick, Emery Gunning, Lee Hawkins, Representative Tim Barton. And a special thank you to Sammy Smith for sponsoring this bill HB seven forty-two. This was signed into law. This continues the existence of the Gangwell City School District being an independent school system. And we wanted to make sure that this was reflected in our local board policy. And also please note that we've highlighted school name changes that will be effective twenty twenty-two. And this includes the renaming of our current middle school, Gangwell Middle School East Campus and our newest. Middle school under construction, Gangwell Middle School West Campus. Are there any questions?
Well, then you'll notice as well as the elementary names will be changing. This was completed after both schools reviewed what their mission is. So this will be included in a lot of our school choice that'll be starting in January. We kind of our promotional opportunities for school choice for the year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. But we felt like it was best to go ahead and include in the policy now. So as we start to promote it.
Yeah, and I did note that it was.
All right, second, well, Ms. Allen, we're up. We have the second reading and the final adoption of the policy JB CD governing transfer and withdrawals.
Again, this reflects the provision regarding children who aren't in foster care or no longer considered kin event though. As well as juvenile code legal references that are no longer, no longer accurate or needed.
Motion to approve. All right, we got a motion by Mr. Smith. Got a second by Mr. Mitchell, any questions, Miss Allen? All those in favor, motion carries, thinking this. All right, Ms. Allen.
Good evening. I have for you this evening request purchase cafeteria tables for the new cafeteria at Gangwell High School campus. Fund is source plus five access, Kruger International. This off the state contract list, McGarrett's Business Products is the dealer of record for this project. In that they will receive the tables, install them, put them together, be responsible for them. Total cost of nine nine thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars twenty-four cent. This is for a hundred and eighty double tables. We'll see about seven hundred eighty students. Then it also includes four round tables that'd be on both sides of the, of the center tables. These tables also convert to bench seating. Very similar to the Noda tables to where you can convert them to bench and totally turn them all around to everyone's seated looking out. I brought before you at last work session. The request that you approve for media center and furnishings for the media center. Again, this is for cafeteria. We've also already started moving in, in contract kitchen equipment. All that stuff is already coming in. So this request should complete the media center kitchen cafeteria.
Have any questions?
A couple. Will any of the correct cafeteria furnishing be salvageable or usable there or at another campus?
We're going to be looking at that as far as tables, that kind of stuff, stuff that is savable. Where we could use them, what school might want them. And then we'll go from there. I know there's some artwork that Ms. Fowler is looking at salvaged in as well.
Okay, students, students chose the various seating styles. I've always do over the table, the students chose those of. The last major renovation of the high school cafeteria. So it has some connection to that. If they can be salvaged, though, I would certainly hope that it is real. And then most of the artwork of those work that was constructed by students. Some shop artwork and shop work. Salvageable kind of things if it's possible.
Yeah, we have had some conversations with Ms. Fowler and she's going to be looking at some areas throughout the district. Where they can use some of that artwork that's in, in that cafeteria and some of the other cafeterias.
Yeah, one of the biggest challenges in this building, there's so many windows. It's not a little false place to hang anything.
Yeah, and some of our cafeteria is frankly are pretty bleak. They have a few posters here and there, like eat your veggies, but.
Yeah. We'll be talking to her about using some of the other.
All right, you got a motion by Mr. Smith. If we approve this tonight, what's the lead time on receiving?
By December. Both again, media center and this furniture. We've earmarked that delivery, install and everything has to be in place by time students return in January.
Any other questions? Got a motion by Mr. Smith. Second by Dr. Randy, all those in favor. Motion carries, Mrs. Hubs.
And continuing the discussion, advanced studies. Coming before you to ask for approval to purchase twenty interactive flat panels for the advanced studies building. These will go in the classrooms, will have one that will be mobile, but most will be fixed mounted. And we're able to use the pricing we previously achieved through bid. So that's why these aren't being bid, because we've already got a bid that is, the pricing is good for one year. So we're able to purchase all that same. List. So I'm asking for approval for seventy-three thousand six hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents to purchase. Interactive flat panels for the events that is building at Gangwell High School.
Source funding numbers.
So there are part of these funds are going to be, excuse me, not this one. These will be from SQUAS five excess funds, apologize.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Mr. Smith and got a second by Dr. Randy, any other questions or comment? And they will be ready. All those in favor. Carries, thank you, Mrs. Hubs. All right, the financial statements for it.
For you, my twenty twenty-one financial statements. Our revenues for the month of May are four million two hundred and ninety-six thousand. Our, excuse me, expenditures for the month of May are five days, six hundred and seventy-two million. Let's say about thousand, excuse me, that's million. Our year-to-date revenues are seventy-one million, beginning from one thousand. Our year-to-date.
We have that summer school, that's all paid out of other funds, so that's not. So we anticipate. Which keep in mind, we will not bring to June financial conversion until September. You get up eliminated works throughout the summer in August, but then we will move on to June to close up.
Motion to accept the committee's first.
Right up, we'll get the rest of the year. As we continue to add more and more projects in camps in the high school. When I bring fully night, really is that request of the body and that trying to. When you look at redoing the pitch of the field track, what we're talking about was. Turf being fulfilled, but also taking our six lane track to eight lanes. Right now, there's only one track between Gangwell and Hope County Schools that is a tiny, which means when we have all kinds of championships. You can only be at that one school. This will allow us to expand to eight lanes. It will also allow us to turf the field, hopefully be able to host more events here within the district as well. The lead time for this was told us about four months, which means if they start in October, we want to have it ready by the time spring rolls around. Both for soccer and tractor. So this will allow us to timeline through it. If you look at the recommendation. Large amount of the cost was still the grading and the site work. Overall, looking at a track costing about three hundred and fifty-six thousand. Looking at the synthetic turf being four hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So overall, you're looking at about a million dollars for the track and the turf. When you are expanding the eight lanes, we are going to use. That outer lane that's currently up against situation place as lane eight. So that'll kind of be the outer lane and then there'll be a wider curve than what we have now. So this will be very prepared with typical just replacement. So the way I like bringing to you now the recommendations to replace the field, first look at field and expand the track. Yes. So right now it's all press. So the more wear and tear you can get out of turf is better. Typically, when you see a seed park. So this will allow us to use the field without having to worry about. And also being able to expand its use. So lovely working with Mr. Miles and because here Daniel is doing all the work at the high school. They will work with us to work. So it's not a subcontract, much as a set. They will, and because this is a state approved contract. It's a turnkey operation. So we were talking the time they started at twelve. So there's about four weeks, I believe, Mr. Miles, of prep work or four not, four weeks, and it'll be term. At this time, no, this is strictly just with the track and the turf. We continue to work with our architects and Carol Bane on the bulk of the bank from the upper period. So once we get more details on that and the budget that we buy for the. Mr. Miles, Ms. Allen, synthetic building last.
Yeah, they're giving us, I think, ten year, ten year guarantee before we have to come back and do anything to it. Add in affiliate to it for anything, ten years.
Yeah, so that, that really comes out into fifty thousand dollars a year. They're pretty close. Board, we have two items here, I'll take them separate if you can. The first one is the budget. Now we've had our two required hearings, there have been no changes and so we'll like directly have lots of two budget, all funds as present.
Got a motion by Mr. Mitchell, got a second by Mr. Smith, any questions?
And then to go along with that budget, requesting to use the roll back milliliterate of six point three nine five.
Got a motion by Dr. Randy, the second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor. All right, any discussion?
We will be, what we need to figure out is when we want to serve it the day of or fall in the weekend, we will guide it for the Sunday after. Right now, our calendars are two hundred and thirty-five days, that's actually published. Ms. Tyler and I spoke a little bit this morning about how we adjust that. So we'll be talking a little bit more about. How we want to offset that throughout the rest of the.
Ms. Hubs, I think that was a question. Since I've been leading the powers in the past day, how are we turning the infinite campus integration and convert?
Yes, sir, today I gave the go-ahead tomorrow, we'll do our final data pool. From Power School into Infinite Campus. That's going to take a couple of days for them to pull it in and verify the data. We've already had two data pulls before this one, so we feel very confident about the quality of the data and what's coming across. And then we will do some additional verification in the district. After that, we expect we will complete that full conversion process by Friday. And be able to, to let folks get back in and get working. I've got to give some big props to our middle school and high school, they've been working on scheduling. Since February, working on their scheduling and they've been doing that in Infinite Campus. They've done a tremendous job and put in a lot of time, learning a new program and getting that done. We will continue to have a major rollout. Of some of the functionality, beginning the Monday after, or excuse me, the Tuesday after the fourth of July, July sixth. We will convert to doing online registration in Infinite Campus that day. And then we will go through some training on the new parent portal the following day. And then we will begin the process of rolling out that registration process for parent portal of the week after that. I spent some time today with Ms. Griffin talking about that rollout of the parent portal. And how we can start getting information out to our families as well. We're going to try to offer some dates before open house for folks who would like to get in a little bit ahead of time. But we'll make a major push during open house to get our parents and families registered into the portal at that time as well.
Which we all know the parents who want to get on and get it all to the schedule. So be patient with us as we transition.
For the teacher training, what kind of process?
So we will do a train the trainer model for the teacher part of the training. We have scheduled that train the trainer session for July twentieth. There will be folks from each school who will come, a little cadre of folks who will be learning the materials that are needed for the beginning of the year. And then they will redeliver that training during pre-planning. And the principals will have some flexibility to figure out when that works within their pre-planning schedule. That'll include things like taking attendance and entering assignments and grades. How to look up information, of course. And then like at elementary school, how to take a lunch count and get that information together. And then we'll continue to have additional training for teachers as we go into the year. So as we get closer to time for a progress report or report card, then we'll have additional training on that piece. We get closer to the end of a semester, you know, we'll have more training. And we're going to just incrementally roll out the features as teachers need them, rather than inundating them with. All of the information at one time. We will be having training for our finance department, we have training coming up for very, for our school nutrition folks, for our nurses. We, you know. And we, you know, we're addressing each group of folks within the district and the kinds of functions that they need from the student information system.
The biggest challenge is the role.
It is definitely the biggest challenge, just making sure all of that is smooth.
What we want our employees to see is when they get in there, it's not dummy data, it's live data for their kids. Because you won't remember if it's just your test site. So we're kind of holding off a little bit on that. Biggest thing is Jill and our team have a great setup of people who will be experts in the area by the time we're all going to come home. Second, I believe, is our first step back to set.
Any other discussion items? Have a motion to adjourn into the. Some of the session, got a question by Mr. Smith, got a second by Mr. Smith, all those in favor?